The parking lot down there, different things like that, but it's, it would be better.
When I think of that splash pad.
Design and bill.
When I think of that splash pad, it makes me want to have local people.
Right.
One of the city did, at least we'd have the garbage go back on coming in.
That's right.
And we need to, need to employ our local people.
Okay. We'll table, basically we'll table, so to speak, there's no motion on the, on the floor, but we'll be tabling and discussing this and bringing it back at the next meeting. Put it on the next, on the agenda for now.
Yeah.
Anita will do the pricing comparison as well for you, Commissioner Ambrose. All right, your internet meeting's at 11:00, we've got about 15 minutes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna push us through this if y'all don't mind, and then, but, and obviously we'll take our time as needed, but let's, let's try to be quick about it. We don't have any committee or department reports or consent agenda items. Under old business, first item's a resolution approving the agreement for solid waste collection.
Your motion we approve.
You got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Not, not to slow the train, but I can explain why that's coming back to the board.
Right.
Board approved it in the last meeting, I believe. But the agreement between, I guess Dana and Roger Anstott, Anita stop me if I'm just quoting anything, was that the school would pay essentially $1,500 for that garbage removal, we excluded pickup in the month of July, so instead of the contract price being $18,016.5, to remove that $1,500 from July.
That's true.
Remove the $1,500 because Kenny's not picking up in July.
Do we know we're operating at least covering costs on that?
I don't know.
When I saw the list of all the, the locations we're picking up from, I just, when, and then I saw the, the reduced number, I thought it was $20,000, it was $18,000.
Right, $18,016.5.
It just...
I, I know it covers more of the cost than it did in the past.
Well...
But you have to understand, this is, this is a new board, and it sounds like maybe a bit of a different mindset.
My, my mindset is that we need to have a proper accounting of any intergovernmental stuff that's happened, and to not have anything on the books was not acceptable, but while we're, how long is this term on this agreement?
One year.
Year.
It's a one-year term?
Yes, sir.
And has Dana given any figures on that? What the cost is?
Well, we haven't asked for that, because the previous board mindset is that when you're working with the Board of Education or the City of Forsyth, that...
Change in money.
You do a lot of in-con, it's all, it's taxpayer money, so...
But we don't pay income taxes if they pay us, and they don't pay income taxes if we pay them, right?
Right.
I mean, they're not paying a tax off that $16.5, right?
No, they don't, not by income tax.
To me, it's just, they've got a budget and we've got a budget. I just, and I'm not trying to pick a fight with the Board of Education, but personally, I like to have a proper accounting of, that matches our goods and services that we're providing.
Yeah.
And from, if we're gonna do it for a year, I'm, I'm not as worried about it, we can assess, but what I don't want it to happen is while we're talking about it, and three or four years later, we realize that our, our cost is $40,000 a year, and we're, we're serving, you know, them to their benefit, you know, in excess of the $16.5, so...
Those calls come in, it's pretty routine. The, the in-con services that we share with the city and the Board of Education, with both cities. So if this is a new board mindset, where we're doing actual cost for things, and, and invoicing for every service, I need to know that, because that's a pretty huge shift of how it's been done.
That's, that's the way I feel about it. I just think, long-term, it's, it's better. You know, it's kinda like lending money within your family, or within, with friends, you know, it's like if you don't keep a good, proper accounting of, you know, in my mind, I've given you a lot more than you've given me over the years, and at some point, we're gonna end up duking it out, and I just, I would just rather us be, if we're doing something that's worth $16.5 a year, you know, for them, then we need to account for it and bill it. If they're doing something that's worth $20,000 for us, I think we need to bill it and let them charge us for it.
Right.
Well, Dana can do a cost analysis.
Right.
We can do that.
For you, no problem.
I'm asking for everything, is that how we want to start doing it?
Well, just this, I don't know of any other situation.
What other in-con services we swap with the Board of Education?
Let's do this, on, what I think I'm hearing is that you're, you're willing to go with this agreement for one year, and in the meantime, we need to do the cost analysis.
Right.
Get it, you know, to get it, to make sure that we're, we might be higher, you know, we might find out that it doesn't cost us as much, it probably does, it probably costs more, but you see what I'm saying? So this time, why don't we, why don't we, I'll entertain a motion to approve this contract.
You already got it.
Got a motion, that's right, from Ambrose, got a second from Commissioner Evans, any more discussion on it?
You sure we don't want to pump for two weeks, just to make sure it's, it's accurate with, or roughly what our costs are?
In wanting to get this done.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty satisfied, simply because of the fact, right, where we're starting from is we were getting, we were doing this and getting zero.
Right.
Now we're doing this and getting $16.5 for a year, and in that year, we should be able to do that cost analysis and make sure that we're accurate, so we can...
It'll come back before us in a year.
Yes, correct.
Without us having to remember, right? It'll just pop up.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Let's give it, let's give it a try, see how it goes.
It's ready to expire. I got a, got a motion and a second, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor? That, that agreement is passed, all right? Now, Larry, why don't we get a motion from you to, first, do we get your official resignation off of the River Edge?
Go move.
With board, right? Do we need to make a motion to remove Larry, or does, can he just?
He can just resign.
Right, I got you. All right, so I didn't know if we needed an action item there, but that being said...
I move, I move we appoint Dr. Priscilla Doster to the River Edge position that necessitates, she is non-elected official and can occupy that particular position.
Exactly.
According to the bylaw...
Got a motion from Commissioner Evans, got a second from Commissioner Ambrose, seeing no discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, under new business, let's go ahead and hit your railroad crossing, John, Commissioner Ambrose.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to start the closing program on the crossing at Midway Church Road and New Providence Church Road, start the closing process on those two, and add a new crossing in between them, a wide crossing with gates and lights.
You've talked with all the interested parties?
I have, and then...
Church is good.
Another crossing, we want to upgrade, make it a wider crossing, is the old Rumble Road, it's, it's a one-lane, that we want to widen that and install gates on that one, and start the closing cross, process on CR-18 crossover.
Okay.
And any monies that are, that come from this, we'd like to add to the rec club.
Correct.
Improving the rec club.
Can I see that?
Um, so...
How is money gonna come from it?
Yeah.
How is money gonna come from it?
There's the amount that they, they've always helped us with it.
In, in the essence of time, here's what I'd like to do, I'd like to get a, what I'd like to do is like to table this.
Yeah.
Two weeks, because we need to, there's a couple of locations, some closings, some openings, some...
We need to start, start the hearings on them, okay?
Yeah. You have, oh...
Yeah, I'd like to table it, yeah.
Hold, hold that thought, that's right, because there's the process, John, explain real quickly the process for the closing.
You gotta, you gotta have a hearing, a couple of public hearings for it, let the public come in there and the pros and cons of the crossing before we close it, or open a new one, and Jim Hamm worked with me for about three years trying to get me helping with that one at New Providence Church, he had no luck with railroads, so I've got a little bit of connection with him, they've got a dangerous crossing right there, and we want to remove that crossing out of double track, close the one that's about 300 yards up from it, open a new one, a wide cross of gates, and swing out on 41, met with DOT and railroad, and they're all agreed with it, and it's helped the church with it, we got a couple other crosses up through there, that are one-lane crosses, and you know how bad they are, Larry, when they drop off in that ditch on 41, they've agreed to widen those crossings and put gates and lights on them.
Okay, so your motion would be to start the...
Start the process.
Starting the closing process, which includes the hearings for everybody, so we, we'll have time to research it.
Right.
But you want to go ahead and get the process started.
Yeah, just start, we can't, can't close it in right now, we gotta have a hearing on all of them.
Right, yeah. Okay, so we got a motion to close, we got the ones he suggested, um, do I have a second?
Well, it's not a motion to close.
A motion to start the hearing process. Motion to start the hearing process.
Got it, okay, motion to start the process, you got a second?
Second.
Got a second, Commissioner Mommy, any discussion?
Discussion, uh, I'd like to, to see if we can throw in the, the Tiff Crossing down here for possible gates, uh, the crossing just below it, you know, that little small crossing just below...
By Tractor Spine.
Yeah, it's got gates, that, and you remember when they had the Operation Lifesavers, federal government paid for all of these crossing gates, and, and I got the one up that built me a thrown in at the last minute, you know, according to the amount of traffic and the straightaway and everything, but let's see, can we, you know, throw it in, because you gotta go through such a process, but it won't, you know, let's...
To keep your breast up, Larry, I talked with them also, that, that bad crossing over at Tiff, you know, where you go, it's like that, they've offered to smooth that out and everything, in return, if the city will work with us on closing that one at Bryant Collision, where people got killed out there, but in closing that one at Bryant, we go back up and open a new one at a flatter place where we took one out, they took one, I don't know why the mayor took that out 10, 15 years ago, but that one at Bryant is a bad one to see, we come into Old Walmart.
Yeah.
They want to close that one, open one up just north of it, maybe 300, 400 yards, so you got a half mile visibility each way, and then...
I agree with that.
And then turn, smooth it out the tracks there on Old Tiff College Road, where, you know, where you have to come over and beat to death.
I agree.
And we can, we can talk about the crossing gates too, but I didn't bring that up, get that deal with the city on that one.
Yeah.
But we need to make it, because they're, they're gonna start running faster trains through here, we don't want to...
They're already doing it, they're going through Forsyth now 45, the line used to be 10 miles an hour.
There will be a lot more of them.
All right, so are we including, as part of your motion, are we including the Tiff College Crossing as well?
Right, discussion, it's, won't be contingent, but let's, can't we throw it in, because see, railroad is strictly interested in closing crosses.
I understand.
But here's the one to open too, if we can close the other ones and move that, the bad ones.
It's trade-off, you know, I had to pay $29,000 off of the one that's there on the road, they wouldn't put a dime in it, that's a dangerous crossing.
We got a motion, start the process to close those three items, those three locations, and open the other one.
I'll give her the locations and everything.
Okay.
And Tiff, if possible.
Right. Got a motion, I got a second from Commissioner Mommy, any further discussion, hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? All right?
With Dana's unprotected crossing.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the ACCG, ACCG IRMA Fighters Cancer Benefit Program.
Yes, this is, that's state-required cancer benefit program for our firefighters, ACCG gave us a proposal for $15,122 for the annual premium, and so, this includes the long-term disability of the $48, $4,867 also, this was a good deal.
Is this what we budgeted, $30,000 for?
It is.
Okay.
It is, so it, it came in as, as we're being bid out.
So we need to, we don't even need to vote on this, do we?
Well, we...
Yes, there's a resolution that...
Yeah, we have to vote on it. So unless anybody has any questions, for Anita, I'll entertain a motion to approve some of this cancer benefit program for the firefighters, got a second from Commissioner Ambrose, any more discussion on it?
This is one we've already budgeted $30,000.
Right.
Come in half of us.
Half of that.
Very good, very good. That was mandated by the state.
Yes.
Easy call.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor? Motion passes. Larry, change orders for the fire station, pro-construction, $12,724.25.
Right, so grade, and the saw was, was subgrade, having to go back, repack it, adding another 18 inches to the foundation, using crush and run.
Okay, and then, let's go ahead and get them both at the same time, EMC?
And the other one is EMC.
They had to move the electric pole, power poles?
Yeah, this is EMC's main line that feeds the schools down on 41 and everything, we didn't know that, I'm gonna tell you, when we got the property, we got the property at a bargain price of $60,000, about $90,000 cheaper than any other property we could've gotten, but that was one thing, I looked at the line when we got it, but I didn't know that was their main line, and it's gonna involve putting, sending, sending four additional poles, so.
Okay.
It's something we gotta do, and it's $28,000, some odd dollars.
Didn't we discuss somewhere that they, that AMC would work with us, or give us something, rebate back on that?
They have verbally said that they would give a rebate back once we connected to the power, like a monthly bill.
We definitely need to look into that.
Well, we are, I've asked the board chairman about it, and they said they would look into it, they didn't give anything in writing on that, but if at all they can do it, and they were looking at possibility to see could they, in fact, you know, not chuckle, they couldn't do it according to their, their bylaws and whatnot. 30 years ago, we could've got it done for nothing, but that was 30 years ago.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
You got a motion and a second to approve the change, no, I got a motion, got a second, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor of approving the changes, motion passes. All right, Probate Supervision Services Contract, Anita.
This is the same contract we do every year with, where is it?
Under F.
Yes. CSRA Probation Services, this Marjorie Baker Greene's outfit, it's been signed by both judges, Judge Wilson and Judge Robbins.
Okay.
Just needs board final approval.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll motion.
Got a motion to approve from Commissioner Mommy, have a second. I got a second from Commissioner Ambrose, I saw his hand first, any discussion on this?
Yeah, uh, I've, I've worked and, and tried to, to eliminate the incarceration portion of this, when a person is unable to pay their, their, the probation fees, there is a fee attached to this, instead of the incarceration element, the judges have the option, and they do, to send them to the workforce development program, that is, they will, if they've not completed high school, they will go through and finish the GED program, who we work with Central Georgia Tech, and that they actively, and that is prove that they can't get employment. Workforce been very successful, get about 90% of the applicants employment, we've got jobs available, so I want to put that provision in there, there will be an option to incarcerations, if they, in other words, it's not an, a, a, a thing, going to jail is something that intimidates people anymore, and it hurts us, the, the base rate is $45, they said it keeps a person incarcerated for one day.
What about the ankle bracelet when they let them out?
They have to pay for that, that's $65 per month, you can't pay it if you don't have a job, if you don't...
But they can buy these ones that don't pay, don't want to go that well, put them out here cleaning roads and streets.
That, well, that doesn't work either, that's, that, that hasn't been something that has worked for us, and, and it's not a thing, well, it's proven good, but if you can put a person in school, give them better opportunity to, to, to get a job, and like I said, they've got to prove that they can't get a job, we've been successful in sending several people to truck driving school, who would not have graduated otherwise, but the judge put his finger on them, telling them, I'm gonna give you this opportunity as an option, it helps us, saves us a ton of money.
Larry, does this, does this change this contract, I mean, we have to...
It won't change it, I won't go to the judges again.
Okay.
And, and, and reemphasize that particular point.
Sure.
You know, it, it has reduced the jail population already.
That's great.
But we've got to re, reemphasize, we don't have, it's 175-bed jail, and we don't have a pool no more, and that's the way we want to keep it.
So I got a motion and a second to approve the contract, seeing no further discussion, I'll call the question, all in favor? Motion passes. All right, first readers?
Actually, the, I'm not sure why it's listed like this, but the Backwoods Bar and Grill, that can be moved out of first reader, and the hospital authority board, change can be moved out of first reader also.
I mean, do we need to handle those right now?
You can.
Sure, all right.
If y'all ready.
Just move it up under new business, okay, so, let's talk about that board appointment real quickly, because Marion McMillan, who we appreciate his long-term service on the hospital authority, has admitted his request to resign from the board, and so, Larry, you had brought a nominee...
Nominee, Mr. Larry Barney.
Barney, yeah.
He's, uh, he's a stockbroker, he lives in River Forest, he's got a master's business administration, insurance license, his background, his, uh, his wife is a registered nurse with a master's degree, his daughter is a medical doctor, son just got out of the military, and he says that he would be willing to serve.
Okay.
And there's a year left on Marion's term, and as you said, Marion did a very good job, he was on the board 18 to 19 years, and the reason he is resigning, his wife is retiring, she's a registered nurse at medical center, and they're gonna travel, they got kids out west.
Sure.
That's all, so I want to nominate Mr. Larry Barney.
Got a nomination for Mr. Larry Barney.
And I would say that since this is just thrown on, I'd like to table this, do a little bit more research, and us all coming up with an applicant for this and vote on it.
You had two last meeting, you submitted two names, did you, for the last two positions?
We voted on two.
This first, I knew that Marion was retiring, last time we voted on him, so this is brand-new to us, I think this all be tabled, let us research, because that, that hospital authority, who we put down there is gonna mean a lot to the taxpayers, what goes on, the money we've got committed to it.
That's why we want to put professional people on, that person that understands a balance sheet.
Let's take it, yeah.
Nah, I stand with my motion.
John, so what I've got is a motion to, to approve the nomination, do I have a sec, do I have a second? I'll second it for discussion.
Yeah.
All right, so now we can move into discussion on, on the nominee, I mean, I think Mr. Bernie's qualifications are, are strong enough, I mean, Larry's right, we, we had, we had the opportunity to nominate other folks back last meeting, and...
But the reason we didn't, because Marion accepted the job again.
No, but what...
So he was appointed, now, now, he's not on there, because I like the service he did for us.
Sure.
But I would like to look into another, let's all look somebody, get in there, because it'd be nice to get somebody that's got more experience in the medical field, make sure what they're doing down there is correct also.
Well, I think Mr. Bernie has, has got a good bit of experience, Larry, you, you want to elaborate on that?
What's his experience in?
Uh?
What's his experience in?
In insurance, health insurance, he's a licensed agent, he has a master's of business administration.
Well, that's great, but I'd rather have somebody that's got hands-on experience for what they're doing down there, the way they're operating and stuff like that, it's, I mean, helps her, let's, since this is new ones, let's put it on.
We've got somebody down there like that, we've got the only female on there, she ran the nursing home here, we've got a doctor on that, works in the hospital every day.
And we're on the hook for $11 million, we'd better make the decisions wisely.
The citizens made that decision for us, basically.
A few of them did.
All right. Well, the rest of the story on that is that...
I recommend we table it.
All right, so, we got a motion to table.
Well, we got his motion first.
We got a motion and a second.
You got his.
Well, but, but understand, you want to table the motion, so we have to vote on the tabling of the motion or not, so you've got a motion to table it, do I have a second on it? Hearing...
I'm gonna go ahead and second for discussion.
Of table in the motion.
Of tabling it, and the reason why is because of this board appointment being such a big deal for all of us, I think it would be prudent to allow a little bit more time to vet, see if someone else surfaces up. I do, I do like the candidate, I, from everything I've heard about him, I don't know him personally, but he sounds like a perfect fit, but in the, in the hopes of, this is one of those things I would like for us to have a, a chance to be unanimous on if we can, so...
Sure.
If, if that means tabling for two weeks till the next meeting, then, then would you be okay with that?
We won't get anybody unanimous, Ambrose looking for somebody that want to do like him, close the hospital.
Well, hold on, hell, hold on, hold on.
Larry, I voted against the hospital, but I told you since then, since the taxpayer voted for it, we got $11 million of that, I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure the hospital passes.
Okay.
Otherwise, we're out $11 million.
Right, all right, so, we've got a motion and a second to table.
For two weeks, right?
The only, the only comment I'd have to make on this is, back to my point earlier, we had two openings for the hospital authority back la, two weeks ago, at our last meeting. I, I brought up two names, and those were the only two that were submitted, my, my point being, no one else had any at that time, and they would've been fine to, to bring in, it wasn't like my nominees were the only ones that were available, but those were the only ones that were on the table at the time, why didn't you bring some in then?
Because Marion McMillan was one of the ones we appointed, had we have...
No, he wasn't.
Had he, no, he just turned his letter in.
Right.
To resign.
He'd been appointed back in the past.
I know, but nobody had any idea he was gonna resign, so now he's resigned, I think...
Doesn't matter.
No, we, we had two openings, and, and we had an opportunity to put five people on the table and pick two of those five.
Sure.
We only put two on the table.
Right.
So evidently, we didn't have anybody else.
But nobody was looking for you, we thought we had them filled.
Well, I, I understand.
You understand my logic on the fact that, my point is to go ahead and get, I think Mr. Bernie's a fine candidate, he's willing to do it, and, and he's, and he's also got a year, that he's fulfilling the rest of Marion's term, I'm ready to go and get the appointment made and be done with it, if we had already had other people in the wings, then I'd, let's vet them all, you know, and go from there, but, so on the motion to table, we got a motion to table the nomination, we got a motion and a second, all in favor of tabling the nomination, show of hands. All right, motion doesn't pass, so now we've got a nomination on the floor, and we've got a second for it, any further discussion on the nomination for Mr. Bernie?
I just want to say, it's hard to get people for these boards, we go out and we try to pre-vet those people, and we try to get them, we try to tell them exactly what their responsibilities are on these boards, and once we find a person that's got the necessary credentials, that's willing to serve, we don't want to make a controversy out of it, because this is all about public service, and when you find somebody, this has been one of the most difficult things we've done up here, and I've been up here 30 years plus, and trying to get people, and once a person gets on the board, they say, well, I didn't understand that this was part of the responsibilities, what am I going to vote on? We've already asked, this gentleman had him, asked, several other board members know him, have talked to him and everything, told him what's involved in the position, and he's got a basic history of what has went on in the hospital, and is somebody that wants to make it successful, that's the thing, we've had people that go on the board and stay on there two weeks and quit, you know, and once we find people, we don't need a controversy about it, just because here's, here's where I am, once I lose a vote up here, I don't come back fighting about it next week, you know, and every, every week is something about this hospital with you, you know, and I, I think it's enough, it's enough.
Well, I think also, Larry, that just because you know the gentleman, that's great, George might know him, that's great, I know him from Absy, I would like to know his qualifications, see if there's any conflict of interest, anything for...
There are none.
I tell you what, then let's, let's put, put it all, find out who you are.
Well, we've already, we've already made that, we've already made that decision, right? So we got a motion and a second for the nomination of Mr. Larry Bernie. All in favor? All opposed? We got four to one, Mr. Bernie's appointed, if you'll let him know and then y'all send him the letter, we'd appreciate it. Backwoods Bar and Grill, Alcohol, Alcohol.
This is, this is the bar that's in High Falls.
Okay.
They, this same owner, but this was, they came in, what, about a year or so ago and reopened. Said they were going to open a restaurant at that time. They're not really a restaurant, they're still.
Mr. Huckabee's old place.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what do they want to do now?
Serve liquor.
Liquor.
Mm.
You just need a motion from the board to approve. What's the pleasure of the board?
Did they already have one?
They have beer.
Beer.
Beer license now.
They're not within the distance of a church or anything like that, but.
They meet all the qualifications.
Location has had a liquor license before.
Okay.
It's been pulled before, to have a liquor license.
They serve full, like a full, I've not been there yet, but they serve a full.
Yet.
Yet, yeah. They serve a full menu, its primary function is a, no, they do not?
Not at this time. Now, to, to maintain a liquor license, they would have to, to offer a full menu. In Monroe County, to have, to be able to pour liquor, you have to have at least fifty percent of your sales come from food.
Food.
So they would have to meet that requirement on a yearly basis.
Am I here to represent this group?
No, sir.
The original owner, Mr. Huckabee, he didn't have any problems up there, you know, but he had a stroke and some other people leased it and that's what she's getting to, but Mr. Vaughn, can we require an establishment or do you know to have some type of in-house security? Is that legal?
I don't believe our ordinance would require that, do they? But we could amend our ordinance to require that with a liquor, with a liquor pouring license, but they don't currently do that.
Locations had one before, had a liquor license before.
Yes.
Okay, but not the same owners?
Not these owners.
They have beer license before then.
This, this owner has, has a beer license now, they're just looking to expand their trade.
So they, are they asking for some sort of deviation from the code or, I mean, if they've, they've met all the qualifications for a liquor license, what, why is it before us?
We got to approve it.
We have to approve all of them.
You don't have to approve all of them.
But they've met all the, all the legal qualifications, other than they're not.
The biggest legal qualification will be that at least fifty percent of their sales come from food, but you can't.
How do you monitor that?
What we require is when, after, once they renew, that they have a certified accountant.
Sign off on.
Sign off, certify that at least fifty percent of their sales come from food.
So that'll be approved after y'all approve the liquor license?
But before they start operating?
No, after they've, after they've operated throughout the year.
Okay, for a year.
See, we don't know what they're going to do, they don't know what their sales is going to be.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a second.